Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call a meeting to a order. Today is Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future capable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Could I entertain a motion to open the meeting?
Hold on. Mr. President?
Yes.
Is this down the yes? Is this a yes? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I believe that the FMS Corus is going to open this up with a place of allegiance and another performance. So I would ask everybody to stand.
................................................................................................................................. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so well we we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Moves by stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the redwoods we watched were so now that we stream? And the roses ran far, the mountains still in air? It grew through the night, and the flat was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the head of the sea and the home of the brave?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. I can't believe you're not going to be watching. Yeah, this is so long. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the concept agenda. I'll be bringing this here in the concept agenda distributed on fans of the news. Does anyone have any requests for something to remove from the central agenda and discuss or take away separately? May I have a motion to approve and accept the items listed as agenda in the minutes of every hour limit? So.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have Dr. Bailey who signed up for the panel? So, seeing the whole business.
I just want to publicly thank Mr. Shandgren and the FMS Corus for leading us in the pledge tonight in the National Anthem, and they always do such a nice job at their concerts and sing-alongs. And they do a lot of nice work out in the community, and I realize that March is Music Month, so we thought it was important to highlight them tonight. So I would just like to thank them again for coming to our meeting tonight. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks, again.
Okay, first on my report is Alphabetz. As you know, we started the extended date in summer enrichment program, and I would call this with Jerry up to introduce the representatives here from Alphabetz.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the school committee. I'm happy to introduce our friends from Alphabetz. Here tonight, we have Chris Malone, the education consultant, Mary Rousseau, who is our regional director for Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and Danielle Romell, our area manager. We've been partnered with Alphabetz since the start of this school year, and our relationship with them continues to grow, and our enrollment numbers continue to grow. So we're really excited about the programming that they offer to the students of the Cushinget and the community of the Cushinget. So come on in.
Thank you, honorable community members. Very special for Alphabetz to be here today. We're very proud to be a part of your Cushinget. I would like to start by saying a big thank you to Superintendent Bailey and Mr. Jerry for partnering with us and working with us in a way that certainly pushes us to provide the best services we can for Cushinget students. I am an education consultant with Alphabetz and also retired superintendent from Massachusetts. Sure, sure. So I certainly understand both sides of this, and Alphabetz wants to ensure that we're a valued partner with Cushinget Public Schools, providing top-quality services for your students, certainly families in Cushinget. And Mary and Danielle will talk a little bit about the programming that you would see in Alphabetz and kind of how some of it works in Cushinget. But thank you very much for having us here tonight.
Thanks, very much. So why Alphabetz? We're in over eighty-five school districts and almost six hundred schools across the United States. We have exclusive partners with enrichment developers. Danielle will tell you a little bit more about our expedition programs that we do in our program. And how studio develop video-guided lessons for instructors, so really easy material for our staff to lead these activities throughout the course of the day. And then newer territory for us is accepting childcare subsidies for qualifying families. So families that you may know or see that are maybe on reduced or free or reduced lunch can qualify for state vouchers that are available. Our connectivity through creativity is discovering an innovative experiential curriculum that taps into children to make sense of wonder. So Danielle, again, will walk you through some of the expeditions that we have going on in our program on a daily basis, ranging from Makerspace and World Languages and STEM fitness programs. Some of our partners across the country that we work with. And then, did you just, Danielle, to be able to go through just a sample schedule of what that looks like in the afternoon and talk a little bit more about the expeditions that we have?
Thank you, Mary. So this is our sample schedule. Each afternoon, our children come to us after a long day at school, and we like to continue that with a few enrichment activities. We always have the same five categories. We have STEM, World Languages, Arts and Entertainment, Fitness and Wellness, and then Makerspace. And then each quarter, the content of these categories changes. For instance, right now, for our World Languages, we're doing a Mandarin unit, which we've partnered with the World Wildlife Fund to write a test with our curriculum team. So that's one of my favorites. When I visit my site and I go around and I see, you know, kids in Massachusetts better singing in Chinese, I think that's pretty amazing. So something, that is the meat of our program. We do also focus on community circles, which is connection with our kids and their connections with themselves, with each other. And we do also have a time for homework support as well, and then clubs, which is a little bit more of a free time area. For our staff here at Cushinget, our site staff here brings over sixty years of combined childcare experience. They are dedicated to providing a nurturing, supportive environment where each child in Cushinget can thrive. With expertise in child development and a passion for education, our staff ensures each child's growth and success. So some upcoming events that we do have, we are having a parent night here at Cushinget on Wednesday, April 9th, the night after your next committee meeting. If you guys would like to join us, we'd love to have you. We are also having a full-day program for April break from Tuesday to Friday on the 22nd to the 25th, and our summer program will run from June 30th to August 14th.
So as you can see, we certainly value our partnership with Cushinget Public Schools. We'd love to engage even more families with more students. We'd love to get the word out there, that's why we're doing also a parent evening. But we're hoping to grow as a program. We hope to be here to support the Cushinget families and work with students in the long term. So certainly, we're very proud to be part of this partnership, and is there any questions or comments from the committee?
Just a numberless question. I can't recall whether the students are participating now and where do you want to be?
Yeah, so right now, our morning program is pretty hefty. We have about eighteen children that participate in the mornings, and then our afternoon is where we would really like to see enrollment rise. We have about anywhere from six to ten children in afternoons.
Do you have any social media that I can share on the Cushinget PTO page regarding this?
We would absolutely partner with you to get secretaries. Absolutely will. Certainly can. And we'd get some of that available too. We'd love that opportunity to be highlighted and like, we really, really get the word out.
There's also kindergarten night, right, with information? So maybe that might be a time for them to speak there as well?
Yeah, we can let you know about those evenings where parents are coming in or registering their children. You'd be more than welcome.
That would be great. You are happy to bring pizza or anything like that to support the crowd and get people motivated, but we hope that the more people learn about it, the more families will take advantage of this opportunity.
Do you have a dinner screen at the table in the lobby while the parents wait?
I will have Mr. Jerry send you those dates, and if you could have representation there with the table, I think it's good information for our families.
Absolutely. We'll be there. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is Reed's Collaborative, the president of the superintendent to the Board of Directors. And as you know, each year, we have to take an official vote for you to appoint me to the board of the Reed Board, and we get that signed tonight after the vote. Sorry, I'm just looking for the vote for that.
Can I entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Bailey to the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next thing for the Reed's Board of Directors is, I gave you some documents to explain that their deaf and hard hearing program has been located at Norton Public Schools, and they've kind of outgrown that. Norton needs the space, and they've been looking for a while for new space for their deaf and hard hearing program. So they want to come down to buying a new purchasing, potentially purchasing a new building in Norton so they can keep those relationships and have all those students there in one space, keep the relationships with the Norton Public Schools. It doesn't really impact the Cushinget at this time because we don't have any students in that program. However, if we did, the tuition goes up a little bit for the deaf and hard hearing because of that purchase. And that's basically it. But I just thought it was important to let you know that the board will be voting on potential purchase of a new building for that program. And it's no change financially for us. Any questions? Okay, so moving on, the next thing, we have expiring high school tuition student agreements, and at the end of next year, we have New Bedford and Fair Havens agreements expiring. And as you know, those are very outdated agreements. They're old. They're probably at least twenty years old. So we've been talking as a group, and we'd love to invite the area high schools, and I know this committee is very interested in expanding that to Old Rochester as well, but we would love to have them come in in August to present to the committee on what they have to offer our students. And it's always been nice for the Cushinget students to have a choice for high school. So what you have in your package tonight, you have template letters to each of those superintendents, that would be Fair Haven, New Bedford, Old Rochester Regional, to send them the letter co-signed by the chairperson of the committee as well as the superintendent to invite them to our August meeting to present their school and their programs and let us know what they have to offer at Cushinget, and then we will be negotiating a contract. By law, we only have to have one contract, but we're open to seeing what those districts have to offer us. Does anybody have any questions about that? So tonight, I would be asking for a vote to send those letters out to the districts. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past.
So I entertain a motion to send the high school tuition criteria presentation invitation to Fair Haven, New Bedford, and Ora, co-signed by the chair and the superintendent.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you. The next two, I'm going to ask Mr. McIntyre. We have a letter of intent for the solar power purchase agreement for the Cushinget Elementary Route, and then right after that, we have one for the Ford Middle School Canopy. We're looking for separate votes on each ability, but I'm going to have Mr. McIntyre discuss those.
All right, so this conversation has existed in the past to the point where we went to town meeting at one point to negotiate to work to a contract with Select for a solar canopy project, inevitably to create a source of savings for the town budget or the school budget in particular if our electricity costs exceeded, you know, the savings figures. Those talks halted for a little bit, and now they're back. We've discussed that at our last meeting, that Select has come back into the picture after we engaged Train to sort of propose an ownership-type solar project that we found out really isn't for us. And so we're back with Select on a PPA, which is a follow-up purchase agreement where essentially we allow them to use our land or our site to put up a solar canopy or project. They generate solar power that they turn into, you know, their own revenue sources, but then they sell us the energy back at a highly discounted rate compared to what we would pay on market. And it was of interest in the past, so here we are again. The letter of intent is just to negotiate towards the project in agreement. It is not legally binding. It just shows that, you know, we have interest and in good faith, we'll work with them on, you know, finding a solution that works for us. So in the initial proposals or the current proposals, a canopy project could essentially save us over twenty-five years, one point two million dollars. And in a Cushinget route project, under the incentives, over twenty-five years could save us an additional one point six million dollars. So again, both of those together, it's substantial. It's an opportunity, and again, I think we've discussed pursuing it. So ultimately, we're looking to sign this letter to work in good faith with Select on moving the project forward. And next steps would include, you know, Select presenting at a Select Board meeting, engaging with the Select Board as the town article is written to eventually sign a contract on behalf of the town for this project. Just to be clear, so if for whatever reason it doesn't work out, we don't enter into a contract, there's no impact, there's no penalty to the district or the town, right? It's simply a reach-in agreement.
Correct.
So we're looking for a vote for each one separate days?
You can pay rental on those equipment?
So we wouldn't pay anything. No cash would leave up pockets at all from start to finish. It would be one hundred percent owned by Select. They would be responsible for the engineering, the construction, the installation, the management, the maintenance, the decommissioning, if that's negotiated into the contract. And again, ultimately, the benefit here for us is they lock us in at an electrical rate, a kilowatt per hour rate, that is discounted compared to the market, and we get to utilize that rate over twenty-five years while the market ebbs and flows in one direction.
Thank you.
Can we add into our record that we should discuss or be part of the negotiation that if the company was to go under, that something would happen, whether the decommission would have to happen prior to the company dissolving or another company would take over? Something along those lines, because I have had experience in the past where a company has gone under, and then the contract is immediately null and void, and then you're stuck with this project.
We have discussed concerns on that in the past with Select. Obviously, we can't guarantee that they won't go under, but, you know, their defense was that they're, you know, worldwide company with X amount of revenue and all that good cash flow, so.
Still should have that, you know, hundred-year floods and. And we still have that warranty on the roof. If it goes on the roof, we still need to make sure that.
Right, so similarly, to any of these projects, we'd make sure we maintain that warranty and we'll have additional insurance or whatever it took. And again, I know that's a point of contention for the Select Board too, that ultimately they're signing the contract to make this project take off. So, you know, that would be up to them. I know based on the feedback we've been given, they would allow it.
Okay.
So could I have a motion to sign the letter of intent to formalize the willingness and intent to enter into good-fake negotiations to execute a power purchase agreement, electricity services agreement, if energy storage is included and site control pursuant to which Select will develop the project under the Power Option Solar Program for the AES rooftop? So.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes. Could I also have a motion to sign the letter of intent to formalize the willingness and intent to enter into good-fake negotiations to execute a power purchase agreement, electricity services agreement, if energy storage is included, and site control pursuant to which Select will develop the project under the Power Option Solar Program for the FMS parking lot Canopy?
So. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The next one is, happy to announce that we received a Green Communities Competitive Grant of five hundred thousand dollars. You know that when we talked about the ballot question for the debt exclusion, we've been saying, we don't know, we're waiting, we're waiting, and we finally were notified, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McIntyre to give us the details on that.
So essentially, as Superintendent Bailey just discussed, we applied for this award. The maximum award amount was five hundred thousand dollars, and we were awarded that. It plays into the strategy of how we've approached our building concerns and from an environmental approach versus a capital approach. Based on doing so, we were able to highlight some of these fixes and corrections, decarbonization strategies, which allowed us to apply for this grant and then we avoided this grant. So that's a little bit of credit to us for thinking outside of the box and approaching it as a Green Community project. You know, with the support of the Select Board, we were able to apply for the award. And again, it's a town award, so it's not directly to the school or the school committee. They will have to vote to accept it and sign the contracts and everything like that, but ultimately, it helps pay down on a debt exclusion that we're anticipating for the air slash environmental quality project, and it won't come to fruition if that project does not pass. So that would mean, you know, we're forfeiting half a million dollars that we might not be able to get in the future if this project doesn't go through. So now's our chance, you know, we're chasing all the incentives and grants that we can, and we continue to. So this is the start of it. We're still awaiting incentive amounts from Eversource, and there are other requests for interest grants out there that we can apply this project to that hopefully will not to more awards and less of a tax impact on the community. So all the news on this one.
So I think this is great, and, you know, I think it's a great first step, so congratulations to you. I know it took a lot of hard work and perseverance to kind of stay on topic, and so thanks for doing that.
Would they be of a final figure, what we'd be seeking through the debt exclusion for this grant, you know?
Well, I know we're still waiting for a couple of other incentives, but.
So initially, the not-to-exceed number on this project was four point two million. This obviously drives that amount down to three point seven right away, and again, we're still chasing up to, you know, five hundred thousand dollars on the high side of incentives with Eversource, which we actually had Train out here Tuesday, Monday? I'm not sure what the week is. One of those days, and they were looking at some of the concerns that Eversource had to see that if he made these tweaks or adjustments to the system that's being proposed, could it increase the incentive, you know, exponentially so that the added cost to the project is outweighed by the incentive? So that figure is still in play. We hope to have it in estimate by the public hearing next week. If not, by the final public hearing, it'll be close to sixteen. But right now, four point two, reduced by half a million, essentially the not-to-exceed amount would be three point seven million.
We can say that with the savings of electricity, you know, with the solar, and you offset that with the cost of the debt exclusion, that would be looking almost a flat figure eventually, because it would be saving that amount of money and it'd be added to the cost of.
So I'd agree, you could say over twenty-five years, if the projections came to fruition, you know, that three point two-ish million that solar is projecting does offset the cost, but it does not eliminate the fact that we still have to pursue this via a debt exclusion, and once a debt exclusion is implemented, we can't recoup that tax increase to the residents. So it's not an exact wash, even though funding to the town or the savings to the town might wash, it won't be to the residents.
But it cuts back on the financial impact on the taxpayer. That's my turn.
Well, no, not on the taxpayer, no.
It's kind of like apples and oranges, right? And then what we need now?
The solar savings would ultimately affect the operating budgets of the town by not asking for as much in utility expense, which again, we don't, you know, increase the taxes unless it's a proposition to a half over five for.
Are we still under the assumption that the Selectmen are going to try to maybe not make it a debt exclusion once we find out all these grants?
That's a good question for them. I know they had a meeting last night where they approved the ballot language, and at that point, I did hear the Select Board discuss having more meetings and conversations about this project and moving it forward. They didn't specify what creates any debt exclusion components.
They're probably waiting for us to find out how much more reduction we can get, right?
So we've met with Eversource three times just since the last school committee meeting, trying to accelerate the process, but because a technical analysis on behalf of Eversource is being conducted, they're literally combing through every component of the project that Train has put forward, and they're questioning it and drilling down and looking at sequences, all these engineering terms that I can't really explain. But it's a heavy lift, and they understand, again, the timeline, and they're doing whatever they can to help us and help to go on here. I'm sorry, so your open net will have, I believe, the second public hearing? Up five, yes.
And there was a range right there, Eversource gave us?
It was, I think the amount was up to five hundred something thousand. Again, this last meeting, there were discussions that there could be more based on the different coils and sequences and controls that they add. I know Train was anticipating the three hundred thousand dollar range, you know, kind of round one, but we haven't had another conversation to say, you know, we're closer to the five now. Again, they were up this week, so things are moving, and they're trying to maximize that for us.
Thank you.
Next, I have the school calendar, and as you know, that was on last month's agenda. So tonight, there's no changes since last month. We would just be looking for a vote from the school committee to adopt the calendar for next full year.
And Dr. Bailey, just a reminder, so this is relatively similar, I would imagine, to the past year. No major changes in terms of starting the schedule. So could I entertain a motion to approve the school calendar as presented?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, motion passes.
Before I get to the recommended budget, I just want to have a very quick discussion on school choice and actually table it for next month. Patrick and I have been meeting with Desi. We've been looking at all of our options to see if there's a possibility of adding some seats, say, to kindergarten, and then over the years, we have. And then over the years, we have revolving accounts for school choice that would actually, you know, build up so that we have that tuition money for when those students get into high school. And this would only be if we had certain number of seats. It would not be increasing our cap sizes. Something we're looking at, we're looking at some legal questions, and Desi's supposed to get back to us, but they haven't yet. So I'm hoping by next month, I'll have the answers, and we'll have a complete presentation on this. I will be asking for a vote though next month because we have to let Desi know the number of seats if, in fact, we do want to go in that direction. And I know this is a very different idea for this committee, but we're looking at all of our options these very tough budget times to see if it would help generate some money for the district. As you know, we get $5,000 for student expenditures. But I think we would do a very, not as random, you know, very structured number of seats to start in kindergarten, and we're probably that way. But I'm having Ms. McIntyre run the numbers on that. We're getting some questions answered from Desi. So if it's okay with everybody, this will be on next month's agenda, and we will be having a vote next month. Okay?
One more discussion, Melper?
What is it?
There'll be more discussion?
There'll be more discussion, definitely. I just, I don't have all the answers to our questions tonight because quite frankly, Desi is asking their legal counsel because they know some of the answers to the questions that we asked. So, we can help before we... Okay, so next is the superintendent's recommended budget. I would ask that we hold all questions until the end so that we can get to the presentation. But tonight, we're presenting to you the FY26 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. This budget has started with our leadership team members submitting their initial requests based on actual spending and needs. This information has been compiled and analyzed closely by the business office and myself. Since these initial requests, we've met many, many times with central administration and leadership team members, as well as our budget subcommittee meeting. We've also had a meeting with the finance committee, and we've really been able to sharpen our pencils and reduce the initial asks significantly, knowing that we have limited funding between the town and the state. As typical, we will be receiving your feedback on this current recommendation for the budget, and then we'll make any necessary changes. And then we would plan to have a joint meeting also with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom and hold a public hearing thereafter. But we would be looking for the school committee to adopt a final budget prior to the town meeting on June 2nd as a final.
So ultimately, I think in the past, you know, we presented the recommended budget. The next month, we've held a public hearing for the meeting, and the month following, if we didn't adopt the budget then by school committee, who would look to in May? You know, we've strategized in the past, we go faster or slower depending on the state numbers and, you know, the expectations on those changing. And then again, with conversations with the town, you know, them sharpening their numbers on the other departmental budgets as well as revenue projections. So the timeline is a little bit fluid right now, but we will look to dial that in with this team and ultimately, you know, whether we have to call a special school committee meeting or anything, otherwise, we would need an adopted budget by June 2nd, which is the time we're meeting.
And I think it's important to note that we're, it's fluid. We continue to receive changes as recent as today with high school tuitions, people moving in and out. So we're trying to get you the exact numbers. Okay, as you know, these are our current mission and vision statements, and both revolve around partnerships with all to promote student success and growth, and we aim to be a high-performing district. Right now, we're currently in the process of reviewing our strategic plan, and we're writing a new one to begin next school year. And these are our strategic objectives. We have achieving academic excellence for all students, and we do this because we have a complete staffing pattern, which includes teachers, carers, coaches, interventionists, librarians, specialists, et cetera. We know that what we are doing is working as the scores at the middle in the elementary schools continue to rise, and AES was recently recognized this year by U.S. News and World Reports as Best Schools. AES ranked 104 out of over 1,500 elementary schools in the state, placing the elementary schools in top 7%. Prior to that, as you know, we were recognized nationally, one in 55 schools across the nation as a national distinguished school. So we do continue to receive national attention. Also, FMS continues to be a model for applied learning, and this school has been recognized recently by the 1-8 Foundation, and you'll have a presentation on that next month. Creating thriving social, emotional learning for all students. An example of this is the enrichment after-school program at AES, and we had that presentation today from Alphabets, as well as the sports program and the clubs at FMS and advisory. We also have responsive classroom district-wide. Strengthening partnerships with parents in the larger community. We send out parent and student surveys to encourage a sense of belonging for all students. We partner with many people in the community for field trips. We're maintaining our facilities so a lot of our youth organizations can access our schools. This year, we've been developing a new survey with cutting-edge, with a cutting-edge tool, which you'll be seeing in the very near future, to help us get feedback and insight from all of our families and stakeholders. And as you know, we've been working very hard towards significant improvements to our buildings, in which we will have two public hearings in the near future. So these three pillars sometimes work together and overlap. So just as a background, we wanted to discuss in general how our operating budget is funded year-to-year. So accordingly, the key components are town appropriation, state aid, federal and state grants, circuit breaker reimbursements, as well as other funds. So for town appropriation, that's based on Chapter 70 formula, and it's disclosed as required district contribution. And for FY26, the state is requiring the town to fund the school's budget by a minimum of approximately $9.3 million. So generally, the town funds approximately 57% of the school district's budget. We also want to recognize that the town doesn't then fund the school district through our own operating expenses, but they also incur additional expenses related to the insurance for active and retired employees, debt service, and for our capital projects, as well as other expenses. So these also live within the town's operating budget. State aid, the governor's numbers show that we, once again, our whole townless district or minimum aid district where they would have preliminary budgeted for us to receive an increase of only $75 per student. So generally, Chapter 78 funds approximately 43% of the school district's operating budget. And then we have federal and state grants, and those are listed as the ESA grants, $137,000, the IDEA grants at $329,000, and our Acceleration Academies and Applied Learning Grants that we've received at $50,000. We have the reimbursement of special education-related expenses from our circuit breaker reimbursement at $145,000. And then, of course, we have revolving funds such as the school fund service, the school food service fund, which funds completely 100% of that food service program at $600,000. We have the school rental fund at $21,000, our preschool tuition fund at $62,000, and our solar credits at $244,000.
So just to highlight, something new in this year's budget, again, is, you know, we work to be creative and try to relieve the town as much of expense as we can. We've decided to implement our revolving funds to help fund our budget. So those, those line items down towards the bottom are new. I mean, obviously, our food service program, we fund 100% through that reimbursement annually. That's not the case everywhere, you know? So that is a good job, again, by our school district. Sometimes salaries of the director or other expenses will fall into the operating budget. We have the luxury to be able to self-fund that, not ask the town for any funds for our food service budget. The school rental fund, those are the fees that we receive from, you know, soccer renting our fields, basketball renting our space. You know, Alphabets helps pay parental fees for the space that they use for their care. So this year, we were anticipating on using $21,000 to offset our operating budget, something we haven't done in the past. And we were waiting to do, once we established, you know, a healthy fund balance in that account, you know, sort of before gambling it away. Similarly, in the preschool tuition funds, we're looking to use that funds, you know, the tuitions our parents pay for their students to attend. Use those revenues to help offset $62,000 worth of costs that we normally ask the town for. And then the solar credits are a part of the deal way back with Shearsage and rental of solar. It's sort of, again, like a PPA agreement where credits have been on the books and we continue to utilize those to offset our utility costs. Moving to the next slide, this is, I guess, really difficult for those on the crowd to try to see from their seats. But ultimately, this is the preliminary Chapter 70 summary that's given to us once the state budget moves along. So initially, the governor is proposing a $75 per pupil increase for our districts. So again, minimal aid, help homeless. And really, what I want to focus on is the comparison to FY25. So, you know, our enrollment is down approximately 42 students, which is based on our October 1 numbers. That's kind of the standard report that they use year in and year out for a lot of compiled data. So at that point in time, our enrollment from '25 projected for '26 is down 42 students, which impacts our funding. Our foundation budget has increased $16,821, and ultimately, what that represents is the amount that the state thinks you need to spend on your budget to provide an adequate education. From there, they adjust it based on your demographics of special ed students, English language learners, other components that left my mind at this point. But altogether, you know, that's the bare minimum that they expect. They require the town to fund the budget, $9.2 million, which Superintendent Bailey spoke about. That's a $435,000 increase year-over-year from '25. So almost a 5% increase that they're expecting the town to pull me up on the school budget, while their aid has only increased $84,000 or 1.16%. Together, those two figures equal your net school spending, which again is required. If you do not hit this target, they will withhold Chapter 70 funds or make you utilize them in a future year, and then if you don't, they will penalize you. So it's important that we hit net school spending every year. And ultimately, the required net school spending percent of the foundation budget, they expect us to spend 6.54% over, again, the foundation budget, which to them is the term is that adequate education that we're responsible in doing for students. More on this later.
Okay, this chart outlines the Chapter 70 funding that we've received over the past seven years. So as you can see, aid has been very minimal every year except for FY24, and that's really due to the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. So minimum funding has been very detrimental to our district and town in appropriately funding our operating budget, as the cost to provide an adequate education to our students outpaces the base funding and minimal increase dictated by Chapter 70 funding formula. So specific to FY26, the increase is only $84,825 or an increase of 1.16%. So that does not even cover the cost of the increase of our yellow bus transportation for next year.
So another slide with a lot of numbers and a lot of figures, but what I want to boil it down to is just trends, right? Knock that button down. So Chapter 70, you've seen it, it's slightly increased year-over-year, 0.6%, 0% happened percentage, 1%, you know, 10.84%. Again, that was in relation to program implementing the Student Opportunity Act, when we received a big jump. 1.7% and then 1.16% is what we're currently looking at. Required town contribution, again, this is required by the state, as again, significantly increased, 5% versus the 0.6% we received in Chapter 70, you know, so on and so forth, up to 5.4, excuse me, 4.92% in FY26 is the increase. Over the years, we've realized, again, you know, at net school spending, we haven't been able to operate as a school. So generally, school districts spend above net school spending. And by doing so, you know, there's additional town contribution that is needed outside of what is required by the state. So it's important to see, you know, again, that number has fluctuated year-over-year. What we've really done a good job in the past three years to kind of keep that honed in while all these operating costs and mandated costs have increased, you know, exponentially, we've kept down the required, the additional contribution that the town has needed to give our operating budget, which ultimately means we're stretching the dollar that, you know, the state is requiring between town and Chapter 70. Again, in the past, you can see, we used to have to ask for, you know, 10% on average, more than what has been required. So that formula has kind of leveled out, but also, we've been able to reel it in and not, you know, be overzealous in what we ask the town for increases. And then in summary, our total operating budget, you know, you can find in this column, it's increased, you know, 3%, 2% over the years in the past. We dealt with inflation, special ed increases, transportation increases, and now we're landing at a 4.6% increase. Again, town share has always hovered around, no matter what the total budget has been, has always hovered around 57%, even less next year and in the past couple of years. One thing I do want to point out and just remind everyone, in the last year, we sort of agreed with the town internally to fund our budget with some one-time funding, which represented our prepaid tuitions and some stabilization reserve. If you take these components out of the picture, last year's budget increase would have been about a 4.3% increase. From there, this year's amount would only be a 2.36% increase. So again, if those, another way of putting that is if those stayed consistent, if we had another $360,000 to offset our budget this year through stabilization and prepaid tuitions, we'd ultimately only be looking at a 2.3% increase.
Okay, so net school spending has disproportionately increased at an average of $459,627 or 3.13%, placing a higher burden on town funding, which, as you saw on the last slide, we've kept to a minimum. Circuit breaker reimbursement is directly dependent on eligible expenditures and ever-changing reimbursable rates, so 75% for instruction and tuition and 44% for transportation in FY25. Ultimately, the more expensive services become, the more you are reimbursed. Revolving funds are directly dependent on what we charge families. So as you know, that we charge families for preschool tuitions or community groups who rent our space, as Ms. McIntyre alluded to earlier. That's another offset to, solar credits is another offset, and that's rapidly decreasing because of the spike in utility costs, and it could nearly dry up by the end of next school year. We have high school tuition costs, and we can't control these costs as they're calculated based on the formulas included in those outdated contracts that I mentioned earlier tonight. So we're taking a closer look at this to renegotiate those contracts for next, for the next several years, actually.
So ultimately, you know, the town has averaged approximately $500,000 in growth year-over-year. We've had discussions with them on that amount, and, you know, some of it is conservatively budget for revenue, some of it is best practice to fund free cash at X percent or close out your stabilization at X percent. But again, you know, we'll see later on in the presentation, our mandated costs nearly outpace this number year-over-year as well. Other things to highlight on here is, you know, our high school tuition, as Superintendent Bailey just spoke about. We don't have a high school, you know, we don't have the FTEs for a high school in our budget, but we make up for those amounts in these tuitions that we pay, which are always a large portion of our budget. So just, again, important things to highlight.
Okay, the next one, I know you've all seen this slide before, but I think it's important to keep mentioning... to keep mentioning that our budget is composed mainly of fixed costs. So the first is salary and wages. We have approximately 137 full-time equivalent staff members. Many of our employees belong to a union. Those who do not are typically employed under one-to-six-year contracts, and all agreements dictate an individual's employee's annual pay and benefits. Technology, we're a one-to-one district, as you know, meaning that we have a ratio of one device for every student in the district, which allows equitable learning for all students, and it also permits immersive learning, gamification, better engagement, blended learning environments, whether it's online or in person, and the ability for long-distance learning if needed. So with this comes the fixed cost of maintaining a strong and safe technological infrastructure that can support our devices, teachers, as well as our student needs. Our curriculum, that's the central guide for our educators as to what is essential for teaching and learning, so that every student has access to a rigorous academic experience. So without poor curriculum, teaching techniques would be disjointed and inconsistent from one classroom to another, as we know, that was the feedback that I had received when I first started. So in order to substantially save funding on curriculum, we generally enter into one-to-three year contracts, fixing that cost over that period of time. Special education, so a lot of everything on this slide, this is the most volatile, unpredictable, but mandated, right? So on a per pupil basis, special education costs are at a minimal, approximately double that of a general education student. To provide equitable services to all students, we must have funding for fixed and mandated costs, which support early identification, assessment related, and social and emotional services, just to name a few things in that special education realm. And finally, in order to be eligible for supplemental education funding, our district must budget and spend at least the same amount of funds as the prior year, which is known as maintenance of effort. Transportation, we're legally, Massachusetts schools are legally mandated to provide transportation to students who reside more than two miles from the school, but our school committee has adjusted this threshold, the distance, to a mile and a half, I believe. But the cost of transportation to our district is approximately $1.45 million for both general and special education, and the increases, and it increases regularly due to the contractual obligations that we have. And then last is, not last, but high school tuitions. We've already said we don't have a high school, so we're legally mandated to pay tuition for resident students to our attended area high schools. Traditionally, this is covered in a municipal budget. However, in a cushionet, we have the added challenge of carrying that expense in our school operating budget. So high school tuition costs make up approximately 21% of our school budget, and it's one of the more unpredictable costs, because as we said, we've got students moving in and out, and we just, we don't know. We currently pay tuitions to Bristol Aggie, Fairhaven High School, as well as New Bedford High School. And then we have operations and maintenance. The district's parcel of land is 54 acres, where we have building spaces, parking, and recreational space that cover the majority of that acreage, and it all requires our attention. Maintaining and operating our facilities is very costly to the schools. These schools were constructed over 50 years ago, so much of our major equipment is out of date and inefficient. So while we work very hard to mitigate the costs that we are able to, many of those related costs to operations and maintenance are fixed, and they do become significant budget drivers.
So again, this should be a familiar slide. You know, every year we start our budget, as Superintendent Bailey discussed, which departments are asked, but ultimately, we boil it down to our baseline budget or our level services budget. So we take how we operate in fiscal '25, and what would it cost to provide those same services or maintain those operations in fiscal '26? So what this slide highlights is our fiscal '25 budget is about $16.4 million, and from personnel costs alone, that increases, if we do not make any changes to personnel, $355,000. You know, again, comparatively to a half a million dollar revenue growth in town that we're discussing, that's significant. Administrative costs have actually decreased. Instruction costs have decreased as well. A large portion of that is because of, in FY '25, there was curriculum that came up for renewal that we did pay for a three-year curriculum. So some of that, you know, organically helped us realize savings in fiscal '26. But also, we are, you know, we are entering into as many three-year deals because we're looking for these grants of free open-source curriculum and applied learning grants that have, you know, started off as trials but have produced results, and, you know, we're looking at sticking with those items. So that is reflective in the decrease there as well. People's services decreased minimally. Operations and maintenance increased slightly. Again, that's typical when you look at, you know, what contractors are charging, and they're all increasing every age year over year. We need to project for that. Community services, again, minimal increase in the programs with other school districts. That sort of highlights our high school tuitions and out-of-district tuitions related to special ed, that ultimately, you know, we either don't have the resources for in-house or we can't, you know, we can't otherwise provide the services, that we have to contract them out. Actually, a big piece of that increase too is the $360,000 that we spoke about as a one-time offset last year. So if you factor that in, this would really be a decrease, but ultimately, that's because we've had some students age out of our programs, and then again, that's once again offset by the increased cost of contractual fees to some of the collaboratives and the transportation for these kiddos.
So we're looking at a baseline budget of $17,013,870. Again, our goal is always to provide level services, but with changing demographics and the needs of our students coming out of the pandemic, we're seeing more and more challenging needs of our students, and we realize that we do have to make changes. So one of the changes that we'd like to highlight tonight that we will be making and proposing for next year's budget is the additional FTE for special education, self-completely classroom, sub-separate classroom, and going along with that, so that's $79,000, going along with that is the van transportation. It's much more efficient for us to provide those services to the students in-house than paying the tuition, as well as the transportation for each of those students to go out of district.
All right, so to elaborate on that a little more, I'm gonna do the math on my calculator and shoot here, but, you know, $133,000 adjustment for essentially a whole other classroom that services, you know, five-plus kiddos, which otherwise would almost cost $80,000 per kiddo out of district, you know, for transportation and tuition related. We're able to keep that in-house and save substantially, so it just, it makes sense.
So we're looking for an increase of $133,000, just over that. So we started with a baseline of $17,013,870. We've added 130, just over $133,000 for the 1.0 FTE for the sub-separate classroom, which we discussed would ultimately save the town and the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the superintendent's recommended budget lands us at $17,146,872. Okay, so as you can see, hopefully you can see, I know the type is a little small, but the salaries are 60% of the overall budget or 2.65% increase. If you remove high school tuitions, then the salaries would actually make up 76% of the overall budget. So we really, we don't build in the flexibility into these budget lines. What you see is what is actually being paid. So for example, if there's an employee that is replaced and they come off the books at $60,000 and we have to bring someone on for $80,000, we make up that difference in our budget. We don't go to the town and ask for more money. At least since I've been here, we make up that difference. We also don't charge any food service salaries in our local budget, as we talked about before. These are charged to the school lunch revolving account, which is 100% self-sustaining. Transportation is 8.4% of the overall budget and 1.33% of the overall increase. So there's a mechanism for us to be reimbursed for some of our special ed and homeless transportation through circuit breaker. However, unlike regional school districts, we do not receive transportation reimbursement. Tuition is 20.86% of the overall budget, which includes high school tuition and out-of-district special ed tuitions. Historically, the budget has carried extra seats for tuition and enrollment unknowns, but obviously, we can't do that because of the budget situation. In the past, we've discussed with the town a verbal agreement that if we had savings as a result of local high school tuitions, we would return those funds to the town, or the opposite, if we see increases due to the results of local high school tuitions, we would request additional funding from the town. So overall, these fixed costs, which are highlighted in blue, are 89.86% of the budget, and they result in a 5.12% increase. And please note, the overall increase is only 4.59%. So all other items represent 10.14% of the budget and results in a 53%, a 0.53% decrease, included in here are more mandated costs, instructional and special education.
So just to reiterate, Superintendent Bailey, again, what we're trying to do here is highlight a lot of these costs are fixed, you know. And all these other categories that we can control, we've ultimately cut from, you know, to the tune of $86,000. You know, throughout this process, Superintendent Bailey has highlighted the importance not to touch our personnel and to maintain our staffing pattern that we have, which is why, you know, again, this is a representation of, you know, a larger portion of our budget, but also a larger portion of our increase. And then we worked hard on these other lines to really keep them to a minimum or a decrease where we can. Again, some of these things like transportation, just locked into our contract. Out-of-district tuitions, we just don't have the personnel, the space, the assets to run programs, and then these goes back in district, outside of, you know, the sub-separate classroom or otherwise special ed services that we already maintain. So ultimately, I'm just showing you the same information in a different way, so this is based on DESI object codes. So, you know, overall, 4.59% increase. You can see we've cut other expenses by $25,000, we've cut supplies and materials by $100,000. Other salaries, this isn't so much a cut as it is an offset to those revolving accounts, removing them from operations. But then, you know, our no object codes are 9,000 series, which is our high school tuitions or out-of-district costs, some of the special ed transportation, as well, or, excuse me, Bristol County transportation, and then, you know, our professional salaries, which we've already discussed, you know, we want to maintain that staffing pattern. So that's just another way of looking at it to show, you know, where we've sort of tried to buckle down and reduce costs. And again, same thing, another direction. So you can see at the district level, the expenses are reduced minimally, but it did increase, so that's a win, right? Special education has increased. Again, I alluded to a larger portion, this is due to the one-time offset that we had in prior year, that does not exist this year, so it looks like it's higher than it really is. Combine that with some move-outs, and then overall increases in the services that we provide, you know, it's still an increase with those one-time offsets. The cushionet elementary, this is reflective, again, everything under that roof, so personnel, salaries, curriculum for middle school. So minimal increases at the school level, and then again, get into high school and special education, high school services, and there's a little bit of a spike there as well. But just another way to look at it and try to isolate different categories.
Yeah, I'm trying to see, but just to go over some stats, we average about 100 students in each grade, but we do have fluctuating enrollment, so some years it's higher and lower. But what we like to do is shift or shuffle a teacher when we have to based on enrollment, so it's not always an add. We've had the primary enrollment, as you know, which negatively impacts our Chapter 70 funding. So compared to the state average, I think the thing I really want to highlight here is that our district has more students in a class, so we're able to have three additional students because we provide excellent PD for our teachers, they're well-trained. It's really not realistic in a cushionet to try to compete with this number per se with the state. We agree that we continuously advocate for smaller classes, especially in K-2, but you may think that these are big asks for our district, but on average, $1,000 less per student than the state, all while outperforming the state. Important to note.
And I'm just gonna highlight some of those numbers, because I have it in front of me if you will. But ultimately, so what we highlighted here was a PK 30 grade, in fact, in high school. So on average, you know, our class composite is 946 students. Our classroom size, as Dr. Bailey alluded to, averages around 20.09 kiddos in a class every last couple of years anyway, grades K through eight. The state average is about 17. And then, you know, more importantly, we're able to educate these students at a higher level at a lower cost, if you will, where state average for per pupil expenditures is about $16,000 versus maybe our estimated $12,000 here in a cushionet or a dent of, you know, $4,000 less than the state. And you'll see that, why that's important as we proceed to the MCAS slides. Again, $12,000 to educate a student in a cushionet versus $16,000 in the state, yet we outperform them in almost every MCAS category that Superintendent Bailey's gonna go over.
Yeah, I mean, this is a separate presentation on data, but just, this is an ELA, three years of MCAS data for ELA, where meeting are exceeding 12% higher than the state. And if you go to the next one, the math, we're 12% higher than the state, and in science, we're 4% higher than the state. So again, this shows how important it is that we need to continue to fund our schools. Our data has been very consistent over the years, and we're doing more with less. So closing remarks, this is the superintendent's recommended budget. It was an all-inclusive process that principals spoke to teachers, to staff, we met several times with the leadership team, with our central office administration, several meetings with the budget subcommittee. So the next steps of the budget process, we'll continue to collaborate with input from the entire committee, the public, as well as town administration. Every item in the budget can be aligned to our strategic objectives that I went over tonight. And then the budget maintains level services and looks forward to growth opportunities and efficiencies as we go forward. So it's strongly encouraging everyone, all of our stakeholders, to stay engaged throughout the process as considerations take place on how to address the needs of our schools and other town departments. It's really important that everybody have input and their voices are heard. This is important to keep in mind, for each percentage, 1% of our budget, it represents approximately $171,469, which is the equivalent of two to three teachers, or two school buses, or Chapter 78 for 26 students. All budget decisions have consequences, and behind every number is a student, a teacher, et cetera. And just because a need goes unfunded does not mean that the need has gone away.
That enclose from me. You know, again, just highlighting the figures here, right? So our budget increase, our $17.1 million ask is an increase of about $750,000 year over year. If we were asked to maintain just a 3% increase, ultimately, we're saying we would have deficits in services down to $261,000. You know, you can follow that trend up the ladder. What would a reduction What would a reduction to our budget mean? It would mean ultimately a reduction in staffing. So we cut from almost every other category. So next week, ultimately becomes staffing. Significant changes in programming, which is tough to do this late in the year and just to do on the fly, you know, in one year, not, you know, in line with a strategic plan. We would have to consider student fees, obviously with discussion from the budget subcommittee and school committee. Or we would just have to start eliminating, you know, some of the activities that we provide and some of the services that we provide, which, again, inevitably would, you know, create overall setbacks as a district here in the progress that we've made and on a national level. And we continue to strategize. So, you know, we're looking at new things with the tuition contracts. We're gonna try to be creative with some of the language that we eventually negotiate to make sure that the fees that we're paying for tuition are fair to us but also fair to the high schools that rely on those revenue sources. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about potentially looking at school choice and signify there's a model where school choice makes sense at a small tuition rate that we would receive over, you know, K through 8th grade before they're sent to high school. We've talked on and off about regionalization, and I know that hasn't left, you know, the table on a possibility in the future. You know, to address operational needs from a facility standpoint, we've procured energy management services projects, which I value, you know, have saved money from just outright procuring this construction and preparing for services by vendors. We kind of pile it all together and provide incentive and rebates and savings that we would otherwise realize. You know, in the past, we've changed our policies and fees. So for preschool, you know, we have to make sure that that rate stays competitive and in line with what would be reimbursed by the state or wouldn't make sense to charge versus get Chapter 70 coming. Use of facilities, you know, we don't want to outpace what our youth organizations can afford. But it's important, again, that, you know, we're paying to keep the lights and the heat on for women to use those facilities. School lunch, again, we try to maintain a proper fund balance so that we do not have to ask the town for any expenses related to school lunch. And, you know, I know our curriculum director has been working hard at, you know, finding ways to bring down the cost of curriculum in the district and applying new strategies in the teaching and learning. We've seen the results, and we've seen the savings. So that's important to continue to keep focused on as well.
Well, thank you so much. And at this time, we'll take your questions.
Have we heard from the town of any change numbers in the last meeting that we've had?
We have not. I know they are going through their departmental budgets at a town level, and they're really trying to dial those in and find, you know, every opportunity for savings or, you know, realistic cuts in those departments. So they are sharpening their pencil and trying to get their projections more accurate and their departmental budgets, you know, reasonable, I guess, if you will, but nothing far has been communicated to us on the moment.
So the revenues haven't changed or revenue income stayed or anything? Do we have any updates?
No, it's okay.
So this is where we're at. We'll be working closely with the committee, especially the budget subcommittee, to see about a timeline if we want to. It looks very fluid right now, but we want to keep it open. But the goal would be, hopefully, to possibly vote on this next month. No other questions?
Do you think by, I'm sorry. Do you think by next month, we'll have some more information from the town?
Again, it's a question for the town. I'd be happy to ask. I know they're going through their budget process. And, you know, I hope, you know, we have to plan a joint meeting in front of the select board as well. So I'm hoping to gather more information through those avenues. And again, feedback on our presentation from tonight. You know, this committee needs to digest that. And, you know, for Superintendent and myself, knowing kind of where we stand and what we're gonna push forward with, you know, while we continue to try to think outside the box. And we understand the situation that the town, the state, you know, the community, the federal government is in at this point. You know, we're doing our best, again, to put our, to put the right feet forward in our district to continue to provide excellent educations for our students.
So we don't want to go backwards?
Correct.
You know, to make it very clear, we've shaved off everything we possibly could. But all of our money is in classrooms and staffing, and we don't want to touch that if we don't have to. So if we do have to cut, the next round would, unfortunately, would have to look at staffing. We're hoping not to go there though as all these reasons that we just talked about tonight. It's important that we fund the schools, and we're not asking for a lot, we're really not. Especially with the inflation of transportation and special ed costs, you know. Okay, next. The superintendent's contract, we will go into a different session for that. And that is all I have supplemented for tonight.
So Mel, who's the Director of Technology Business Manager, just what's your name? Are there any other school committee reports?
So do we have packets?
Okay, so there's other communication information, district newsletter, any other news? The environment quality update, FMS personnel reports during the communication. I did want to just publicly recognize on behalf of the committee, Mrs. Palatier, who donated a guitar to the FMS music department. So thank you, Mrs. Palatier, for that explanation. We appreciate it. So I think that's it for tonight. We would, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. And we will adjourn, adjourn the meeting to a definitive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions and preparation for negotiations non-union personnel or to conduct contact negotiations with non-union and union personnel including superintendent and business manager and reconvene in open session for the purpose of only the superintendent's contract. Colin, please.
Aye.
Given the late hour, there's some additional discussion that needs to take place, which we will table for April. So we will not take a vote tonight on the superintendent's contract. So may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Do a vote call.
Byron, you'll listen. Second, yes. Mr.?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey? Yes, this is the house pro.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes meeting as a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you.